...of the Prince William County School Board to order. Today is January 12, 2021. We're doing a work session on the capital improvement plan. So I have to read this. Pursuant to school board policy 139, school board member participation in meetings by electronic communication. School board members Lily Jesse of the Okaquan District and Diane Ralston of the Neabsko District will participate in this meeting through electronic means from their homes due to a medical condition that prevents their physical attendance. The clerk will so note the minutes, so note this in the minutes of the meeting. Tonight's work session is for the school board to be presented with the proposed capital improvement plan for the year fiscal year 2023, 2223. What is that? 2023-32. Got it right. I thought that was a typo. Okay, no, 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 that's right. So it's a 10-year, 10-year capital improvement plan. So it's for the next 10 years, folks. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Superintendent Dr. McDade.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'd like to introduce our capital improvement team. Maureen Hannan, Dave Beavers, and Dr. Matt Cartledge are joining us this evening. And we are led by our Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Al Shiroki. And so they will be presenting the capital improvement plan for us this evening. Mr. Shiroki?
Good evening, Chairman Latif, members of the board, Dr. McDade. It is indeed my pleasure, along with our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. John Wallingford, to present to you the Prince William County Schools' capital improvements program for the fiscal years, and I can't believe it either, thought it was a typo, 2023 through 2032. The format for the agenda this evening is very similar to what you have seen in years past. And I want to go over just a brief agenda that we have. We will start with reviewing the CIP proposed, the projects that are in, are actually in progress today. Kind of give you a summary of where we are from the start of the calendar year, from January of last year. We're going to discuss the CIP process. We'll review the proposed CIP. The most important piece is just bringing you any changes that we are recommending in the proposed plan. Sharing with you our updated enrollment projections. Primarily, we will focus on the first five years, but we do show for 10. Our construction renovation plans, as well as our large maintenance improvements that we incorporate for our existing portfolio of buildings. After which, we'll talk about next steps in this process, as you've done in years past. So our capital improvements program working group, always want to take the opportunity. This is a partnership, not only between operations, but also with our finance and budget departments, which are led by our directors of facility, facilities, Mr. John Winley, as well as our Budget Director, Mrs. Kathleen Addison, and then our Director of Finance, Vivian McGedigan. That partnership is in alignment with our CIP team, which is led by, as was introduced, Mr. Beavers, Ms. Hannan, and Dr. Cartledge, who all handle the CIP process, the financial planning, as well as our boundaries, which dictate where we have capacity needs. So we want to thank everybody for working towards this. Each of these groups provide us with multiple perspectives. Obviously, the drive is student need, and then it's the balance between that and available funding. And we find an excellent compromise in doing what's necessary for our school division. With respect to completed projects this calendar year, again, we want to recognize the fact that we opened two secondary schools, one on the eastern part of the county, Potomac Shores Middle, as well as in the western part of the county, Gainesville High School. We've also completed some renovations that were fairly substantial. Penn Elementary, Bevel Middle School, and Mountain View Elementary Schools. We finalized in early winter of this past year, the auxiliary gym additions at Garfield and Woodbridge, as well as some of the final turf field conversions at Battlefield High School and Forest Park High School. In addition, we are currently working on the opening for the, tentatively to be called Rose Mount Lewis, which there'll be a naming process that you'll be going through in the near future, which is scheduled to open in 2023. And here you see some photos of, that are about five weeks old of the current construction. If you drive by on Ashton and pass this school, right there near Ashton and Sudley Manor, you will see that this school is, obviously is, out of the ground and it is moving. It is a three-story school, has a lot of structural steel and a lot of CMU block and brick that will be incorporated. Hence, the reason why it's already out of the ground, because the fact that we are building a third story. Some of our additions that are in the CIP, Gainesville Middle School is an 11-classroom addition, and Reagan Middle School, a six-classroom addition. These are currently scheduled to be opened at the start of the next upcoming school year. As well as some renovation work at Osborne Park High School and Unity Reed. As you're aware, we've incorporated fenestration, i.e. window replacement projects, and then some new windows at those two schools. Part of that project was doing the office renovations at both schools that were not completed back when they enclosed the open concept within the building. So these are marked improvement for both schools. Allows greater efficiency for our parents, for our public, and for our school staffs who have to operate in them on a daily basis. We've also had some substantial in this past year roofing projects, respectively at Freedom High School and Battlefield. This is a two-summer process. This summer will be the second phase where we'll be completing this. But you see photographs, the one on the right, you could see the new roof is on the structure on the left, and then the existing roof is on the right. In addition, we've had some major HVAC improvements that we continue to do year in and year out. These are examples of chiller replacements at Westgate Elementary and Ellis Elementary. And we've begun a two-year process on replacing rooftop units at Graham Park Middle School. And here's just a photo of one of the units, and we'll be replacing a very substantial number this upcoming summer. For projects that we currently have under construction, this is a slide that just kind of gives you kind of a status. Currently, we're constructing Rose Mount Lewis Elementary, Gainesville Reagan additions. But we also have renovations currently underway at Hilton High School, Bennett Elementary. We're working on the fenestration work, which will be primarily this upcoming summer, at Osborne Park, Unity Reed. And then we have the renovation at Parkside Middle. In addition, later this spring, you will see that there will be contract awards for renovations at Bristow Run Elementary, Signal Hill Elementary. You'll see a fenestration project at Graham Park Middle, as well as the practice turf conversion to synthetic turf, or synthetic turf insulation, and then stadium lighting at Brentsville High School, as well as a project for a CTE culinary improvements at Garfield High School. So in our CIP process, this is the part that you're most familiar with. We're going to follow the same basic methodology that we've done year after year. We always review the current enrollment data and projections. We review our available funding, and then we continue to focus on maintaining our portfolio of existing facilities and structures, knowing that that is the majority of what we do in facilities. This year, there are two big pieces that have been added to our process. We are incorporating the school division strategic plan, and I will go over that in just a few slides. We're also including the school board and superintendent's sustainability initiative. The committee has worked very hard this past year, and they have presented a series of recommendations, not just for this upcoming year, but for many more years to come. And that will be a fluid document as they continue to evaluate and reevaluate. But you're going to see where we're taking many of their recommendations and incorporating them into the CIP being presented this evening. When we look at student enrollment, and again, this is information that you see on a monthly basis. You know, our September 30th count, we had an increase from the 2020 to 21, increase of 392 students. On September 30th, our enrollment was 89,468 students. And then you see the breakdown of where we grew or we declined. We are projecting over the 10-year period, the first five years, we are projecting about an increase of just over 3,400 students. That will be far more than the tail end of years 6 through 10. And a lot of that is based upon the number of live births that are occurring here in Prince William County at its hospitals. This is something that's trending, not just here, but throughout the state of Virginia, where live births are on a decline as a whole in a majority of areas. But it is a primary indicator that we do use in calculating our projections. And again, we will monitor this. We always know that when you're looking at projections, the years that are closest to you are, we know, we have confidence that they're far more accurate than those out years. So every year, we adjust and we readjust. As you're aware, last year was not a good year to measure enrollment due to students returning, but it was a very small number of physically coming back in person. Many were virtual. This is the first year where we had over 97% come back. So this is, I will say, this is the reset, where we look at this year, and even next year's data will be very important as we monitor students that, for whatever reason, left our school division. Possibly, they moved out of the area, their families did, either out of the state or out of this county. They could have gone to homeschooling, they could have gone to private education, and we're seeing that fluctuation go back and forth. So we continue to monitor that on a continual, on an annual basis in order to be able to give you the best projection possible. One item that I want to spend two slides on is just talking with you some of the repercussions that have come from the pandemic itself as it relates to the construction industry and price trends. When it comes to those items, you know, we've witnessed a lot of volatility in cost. In the, in the past, you know, there's been issues with availability, delivery. But in the past, it's been where there's only one or two items may fluctuate. And I'll give you an example. When gas prices in the years past have gone up, we see an increase in any product that's petroleum-based. So if there's plastics, if there's asphalt, we will see an increase in that pricing because those manufacturers are paying more for fuel. Well, one of the phenomena that's occurred with the pandemic is that, knowing that a lot of industries and businesses had to shut down, they were not able to produce a lot of materials that we would all expect. Now, we all see this on the consumer end as well in our stores. But from a construction material standpoint, it has caused delays in being able to receive items. It has made items very scarce. When items are scarce, but they're in high demand, the prices go up. So when you look at the slide here before you, please pay attention to the left side as far as where you see kind of normal volatility. But then when you get just a few months back, or to the right of that red line, you see where many of the items went up in price. So it just wasn't one type of item. Now, when you look to the far right, you see that there's a decline. Now, this is something I think we can all relate to. Lumber prices, materials that use wood, they skyrocketed about six, seven months ago. Those prices are rebounding to where they're back to what we would say is pre-pandemic pricing. And we expect that many of our other materials will too, as, as businesses begin to, I'll say rehabilitate their supply chain and inventory increases. The reason I'm talking about this is that from us, from a budgetary standpoint, we have to be cognizant to monitor the pricing. But also, when we do renovations and we award construction contracts, we have to be aware of the volatility in the pricing and how it can impact the final cost of what we're paying, as well as us being able to phase from one section of a renovation to the next. You have to have the materials in place to complete it before you can move on to the next phase in a renovation. This final slide with price trends really just kind of highlights the fact that we've had higher-than-expected prices, our lead times have increased. We've had contractors that normally would guarantee a price for up to 60 days with a bid. And they're now coming back, as some have said that they would only guarantee prices as short as 10 days because of the volatility. And this varies from product to product and from supplier to supplier. All that being said, it just demonstrates that we just have to be cognizant of this as we bid our projects. But I also wanted to show you three variables here between cement, structural steel, and I'll say softwood lumber, pine primarily that's used in the trades. You'll see with structural steel that there was a tremendous spike in 2021. That's an example of the volatility that occurred earlier this year. And you are very familiar with this, as when we awarded Rose Mount Lewis's construction, it was right at that peak. Again, a three-story school warrants a substantial amount of steel, and there's some additional costs, you know, obviously, we have to bear for that. But the trend for steel is trending downward as well, from what the analysts say. But it is one where we just have to be cognizant of this as we press forward and we look at the total amount of finances that we have to, to use. So at this point, I'm going to invite Mr. John Wallingford, our Chief Financial Officer, just to go over the next two slides that, again, you have seen in years past, but they are updated and reflect our current spending and bond capacity.
Thank you, Al. Dr. Latif, members of the board, and Dr. McDade. This first slide that you see, like Al mentioned, you've seen in prior years, and represents debt as a percentage of total revenue of the school division. This is a metric that we measure as a result of a document called the Principles of Sound Financial Management. It's a document that the county manages and maintains in order for us, us, the county and the school division, to maintain our AAA bond ratings. The, the metric is 10% debt as a percentage of total revenue. You can see in the, in the late teens, right before 19, I guess it's 1918, 19, excuse me, 2018 and 2019, you can see that we were pushing 9% total debt service as a percentage of revenue. That's a number that makes folks like me uncomfortable. Over the next several years, you can see that number's fallen off to almost as low as 7%. And we expect, we expect that number will stay in the range of 7% over the next, over the next couple of years. So a good metric, keep our bond ratings at AAA. The next slide you see here is, it's just our total debt sales over the next 10 years. And the chart to the right is a representation of debt service as bonds are fully paid off. That's the green, those are the green bars, and the blue bars are debt service as we add additional debt. And you can see that going out into the future, our debt service increases a bit, but remains relatively flat over the next several years.
So the next piece that we have within our CIP presentation is just talking briefly about the superintendent's advisory council and the recommendations, or the multi-year recommendations that they have made. They have been, obviously, the initiative has been outlining your strategy to improve Prince William County Schools' carbon footprint, as well as reducing our dependency on fossil fuels and changing the educational culture surrounding sustainability. And our advisory council has developed a series of recommendations on how we should proceed with incorporating sustainability, not only into our CIP, but also into our daily operations, be it from a facility standpoint, but even how our schools operate their own facilities and use their buildings for instructional purposes. The school division CIP, we are taking the first steps this year in implementing this initiative in several areas, which you will see here, they have recommendations to work with staffing as far as increasing the level of staffing, knowing that there's data that has to be analyzed to be able to demonstrate sustainability. But really, it's focusing on the, the rigor of the environmental literacy that the resolution that you, you created and approved has us working in our schools from a K-12 arena as far as project-based learning and assignments and the materials that teachers can access and that our sustainability team can help facilitate that process. We also have representatives being recommended for the Joint Environmental Task Force. That's a partnership between you as a school board and our County Board of Supervisors. They're recommending LEDs as one of the first items to tackle, knowing that you get the quickest return on investment inside the classroom. It improves the brightness of the classroom, which helps with instruction, keeping kids attentive and invigorated with the assignments. But also exterior lighting replacement, where not only does this all save energy, but it also helps with security. But the return on investment for LED replacement, that we have, still have numerous fluorescents in our buildings, it's a five-to-six-year return. So, you know, again, they say, take advantage of that low-hanging fruit before you move on to the next type of technology. Solar power purchase agreements. You know, this is one where you're going to see that there is an RFP that is out there and that we will be making a recommendation. The sustainability group, you know, believes in testing what we do before we scale out on a large scale. And you're going to see that with our solar program. We're going to start very small. We're going to monitor, measure, and ensure that what the vendors are telling us, that we actually get that realized savings, knowing that we would be entering into an agreement for 20 to 25 years on average. We want to make sure that we're, we're putting our resources in the right place, given that commitment. They also include something that works with saving one of our natural resources, which is water. And that is putting in some technology, which we call smart irrigation. But it's basically where you have technology sensors that are able to determine if you have pipes that are leaking water. If you have irrigation systems where heads have broken under the ground and that you cannot see them. These are items where you can save a substantial amount of money, knowing that there is a cost if you have a high volume of water coming out, so many gallons per minute. You know, that does, that does add up, and it can cause additional hardship financially on our water utilities, as well as being able to recognize within minutes of a sensor triggering that you have a leak and that you can get that repaired, so that you're not wasting, again, that valuable resource. One of the things that, a word here that may be new to you, that they have embraced, and that is biophilic design elements. So biophilic design elements is almost taking fenestration, where we bring natural light into the schools. It's taking it to another level, where not only are you bringing natural light into schools, but you're bringing the outdoors into our buildings, be it plant life, be it trees, plants, shrubs. How do you incorporate those items into the, into the interior of the environment? And our team, I know they're going to be focusing on looking at a lot of examples with a lot of corporate facilities that are built in this area, as well as in higher education. That's a, that's an area that they have embraced, that we want to look at to see, how can we manage that? You know, beyond what you see outside, when you see gardens and you see flowers and natural plants being planted, what can we bring into our schools? As well as taking advantage of things such as simple as electric vehicle charging stations. This is not for the school buses. These are charging stations that would be used for students, teachers, patrons, ultimately, that come to our facilities. And there have been some grant opportunities that we are looking at, and they're investigating, to see if this is something that we could embrace, knowing that the volume on the consumer end of electric vehicles grows each day, as far as what we see out there. So we're very pleased to share that of all these recommendations that you saw on the past page, there are some items that we have already done this past year, but there are items that we are incorporating into the proposed budget. You know, bottle, water bottle refilling stations. You know, we have installed those in our schools. Having a representative that will be coming before you in a future meeting for you to approve, to have on the jet team. Standalone air purification systems. You know, we focus very heavily on the mechanical systems that we have, the fact that we can monitor them. But we did purchase a very small amount for our portable classrooms, as well as for our nurses, for their, their clinics, and also for the isolation rooms. And then we've got the solar purchase agreements. But the items that we are putting into the proposed budget, one are some additional staffing for sustainability, a fairly aggressive LED replacement plan for interior and exterior lighting, as well as the smart irrigation controls. And then the second item that has played a tremendous part in the design of the CIP this year is we've made strides to incorporate our division's strategic plan by focusing on two of the commitments within it. First, with positive climate and culture, and this is where we've made a commitment that we will effectively and actively integrate environmental literacy into all grade levels. We have, we will be completing our first net-zero school at Okaquan Elementary within the five-year CIP. Our plan is to reduce our division-wide greenhouse gas emissions year over year between FY '23 and '26. And we are aspiring to have at least five schools earn the U.S. Department of Education's Green Ribbon School designation for their individual schools. We've received it as a district. We want to try to incorporate that into each of our individual schools over time. The second commitment is with organizational coherence. And this is where we ensure that our strategic priorities are driven by our investments. And we've set a pretty lofty goal of having eight school renovations underway by 2026. So as we incorporate the strategic plan, again, we're looking at fine-tuning and developing a division-wide maintenance and facility plan. We want to create high-quality learning experiences that promote environmental literacy in our classes. We want project-based activities, so not only are you doing, say, a math exercise on paper, but you're actually able to measure the technology, the energy usage, so that you could see the applicability of how that's incorporated, as an example. And at the same time, you know, we know that for many of our schools that were built in the early 2000s due to the population growth here in the county, we need to be able to have a facility condition index that's really going to look at those because they were all built within a short period of time, for us to be able to determine what is the best route for us to take with future budgeting when it comes to renovations in that respect. So here's the bulk of what the proposed changes are, and they're actually very subtle compared to what you've seen in previous years. The first is, knowing that we made the decision back last summer, the opening of Rose Mount Lewis is now in 2023. But we also have three schools where we are moving them back. Potomac Shores Elementary from '24 to '26, a Route 1 South Area Elementary School from '29 to '2031, and then the Yorkshire Elementary School from '2030 to '2031. Now, the reason why we're readjusting these is primarily the fact that over the past year, there have been several developments that have been approved through the county. And we're changing the construction schedule for these schools so that they're aligned with those approved projects, knowing that they all have individual 10-year build-outs. So we want to make sure that we open the school when it needs to be open, and it's not open well in advance, where the school would not have the students to be able to populate it. As these projects break ground and they begin to build, if we see that some projects are more aggressive than others, every year, just as we do, we will come back and we will adapt and adjust with our recommendations for when these schools should be open. But right now, we believe that this is the best alignment for those three schools particularly. In addition, you see under the renovations, we're very pleased to be able to introduce that Fredlin Middle, Unity Braxton Middle, and Woodbridge Middle, respectively, will all be within the CIP. These are schools that have reached the age where they require, they've been, had work done in years past, but they require a substantial renovation in the next few years. In addition, we are looking at some mechanical, electrical, and plumbing improvements, type, that type of renovation work at four of our transportation facilities. And finally, there are some new projects that are being introduced that are school-specific. We're excited to be able to say that we have the final two high schools that are part of the artificial turf installation. And that is at Osborne Park High School, where they will receive an artificial turf concession building and a lane track, as well as Garfield High School, which will receive the turf field and a new concession building. We're also excited about the fact that our partnership with Career and Technical Education, that we have continued that in assisting them with their instructional improvements that require our facility staff involvement. In particular, we have some design money proposed for Freedom High School to begin designing a future pharmacy, a pharmacy tech lab, as well as a cosmetology lab. That will actually be the construction money. You approve the design money in last year's CIP for a cosmetology lab expansion at Woodbridge High School. So the next slide here is just, captures all of the capacity projects that are within, between now and 2031. And you see the schools that I've mentioned at the beginning, but do note that at the bottom, you see the three schools that we are realigning. Potomac Shores Elementary, Route 1 South Area Elementary, and Yorkshire Area Elementary Schools. In addition, for our renovations, this is for the next, for, through June of 2028, these are all of the schools that we are renovating. And at the bottom, you see that the three additions of Fredlin, Unity Braxton, and Woodbridge are now added to that list. Under school maintenance and repair, we have major categories that we focus on, ranging from asphalt, be it tennis courts, parking lots, electrical improvements, be it service connections, new outlets within buildings. We have fenestration projects, HVAC projects, plumbing improvements, roof replacements, gutters, skylights, portable classroom relocation, as well as any Title IX improvements that may exist and that come about over time. So with this, you know, what I will say is, this is the biggest component of our CIP, in my opinion. You know, though, we always have to build new spaces when enrollment dictates, and we renovate our schools on a very regimented process. These projects allow our schools to remain updated when it comes to the essential maintenance and improvements that need to occur before the school is, undergoes a major renovation. This is the stuff that keeps our schools maintaining. And I think this is what separates us from many other public school localities, is your continued commitment to major maintenance, to where when we talk about backlogs, our backlogs are not at a level that many school divisions experience because of this continued investment. And we saw that when we worked with our HVAC at the beginning of, of the pandemic, and we assessed our, our equipment, that we found that we did not have any major problems that required major work to be done immediately. There was a lot of minor modifications, but it definitely demonstrated the investment that you had made. This slide here just kind of goes over what you saw last- This slide here just kind of goes over what you saw last year. And I, and I use this because it's fairly substantial, but it gives you an update on where, which projects we've completed under maintenance, major maintenance, but also some of the projects that are continuing into this spring and summer. So you see dates here where it may be in progress, it's completed, or you'll see that it's happening summer of 2022. But it's just to give you an update with that. Two items to note. We do have two tennis court projects where the dates moved up one year from where they were. And that's Battlefield High School Tennis Court Paving, the funding is in 2023. And then Forest Park High School Tennis Court Paving is going to happen this summer. And as we did a facility condition evaluation of our tennis courts, those were two that really came about, as well as you see that there, there are others here that are within, within both slides that you saw, the previous one and this one, respectively. Fenestration, you know, we're continuing to do those projects. Roof replacements, we've got some partial replacements at Neapsco, Ripon. There is roofing project at Forest Park, as well as Osborne Park High School. We continue to have lighting upgrades where funding allows within the, this section of the budget. And then you've got the HVAC upgrades, and they're fairly substantial in nature. So these are the ones that are new to the CIP. And you see very similar categories. But again, I wanted to highlight some of these, you know, when it comes to environmental, you know, stormwater pond repairs. There's nothing really instructionally sound. It's a great learning tool for environmental science, but it really doesn't impact the operation of the school. What these ponds do is all the stormwater that comes off of our parking lots and off of our sites, they, the water runs off into these ponds that are on the sides of many of our facilities. These schools that have these projects, they've reached an age where they have built up in sediment. They have to be cleaned so that they can fill over many more years any sediment that comes, that washes into those ponds, as well as making sure that they're structurally sound after you clean them. So that's an essential piece that the Division of Environmental Quality requires with what's called our MS4 permit that we have, that all localities have to participate in. And then you see HVAC projects, you see some tennis courts. In addition, under asphalt, Bull Run Middle School, you see a track replacement at Potomac High School, as well as tennis court resurfacing. Benton Middle, you see tennis courts, and then Woodbridge High School Tennis Court Resurfacing. And then some, again, those partial roof replacements. So the last slides that we have here, these are summation slides. And basically, this slide here shows you the funding that's balanced between bonds and cash, general fund monies that we have. And you see that the, if you look at the bottom right, under five-year and 10-year, that our five-year CIP is just over $719 million. And our 10-year CIP right now is just over $1.2 billion in value. And that number changes over time, obviously, as prices go up, it goes up. But as we add projects or remove projects based upon our timing, you'll see that those numbers, they're always a continual fluctuation from year to year. And then you have the summation slide that's very beneficial for folks where you can actually see our student population, the current student capacity for our buildings, the number of portable classrooms that we have to use in our schools. You know, as a board, our goal is to not have portable classrooms where we can, where we can prevent them. And we do that through adding capacity projects. When we see that there's long-term fluctuations in enrollment and capacity is not going to change, it's going to continue to maintain or, or continue to grow, we add additions. So many of the trailers that we have in our account, they're at schools where we are building additions as we speak, or they're a few years before we build a school and open it up. Just as right now, there are trailers that were associated with Potomac Shores and Gainesville High School. As those students continue to phase in to becoming students at that school, the trailers that were associated with that capacity growth, those will continue to diminish in time. Battlefield High School is a great example. The trailers are there today, but as we transition and more students go to Gainesville High School, you will see that there'll be, there will be a reduction in that. So those trailers, they fluctuate as we build schools for the most part. And then last but not least, you see at the bottom there for proposed costs for all of our new school facilities, renovations, and all the major categories, you see that number that you saw on the previous slide for five years, which is just over $719 million. And for next steps, you know, again, no change here. We're presenting it this evening, January 12th. You will go through a series of presentations where Mr. Wallingford and his team will present the operating budget. There'll be a public hearing. There'll be a work session in February. You'll have your budget markup primarily for the operating budget on March 9th. And then the CIP and the, and the operating budget's approval is scheduled for March 16th. So before I close, I, I just, I would be remiss if I didn't do that. I want to thank our budget and finance departments for their hard work in working with facilities and being able to find this balance. Specifically, do want to thank Mr. Beavers, Ms. Hannan, and Dr. Cartlich for their direct involvement in this process. So at this time, Dr. McDade, I turn the presentation back over to you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the CIP presentation, and the team will take any questions that the board might have.
Wonderful. We'll start with questions. Let's start with the folks at home. Can you show me them on the screen? Ms. Jessie, Ms. Ralston, do you have any questions? Yes, Ms. Jessie.
Hi, I just wanted to thank Mr., the facilities for all that they've done, not just for tonight, but for the opening of schools. I, I mentioned this during my briefing. And since Mr. Shiroki is in the room, I want to make sure that the community is aware of what they've done to open school with schools with the snow and ice. So I want to say that. I also want to thank him for the auxiliary gym at Woodbridge High School. It really changed the, it changed the entire environment of that school. It gave the school a more professional look and, and open look because Ms. Ross and I both have these schools without windows. And that, that, that structure on the front of that, those two buildings really changed how people see that building. And I also want to thank him for the cosmetology lab at Woodbridge High School. The, I'm told it's not fenestration, but I think that you're doing an opening of the, opening of the building entranceway at Woodbridge High School, you're changing that. And I'm really pleased that Aqua Kwan, I just wanted to make sure that this was in the public domain, is going to be the first net zero school. Very pleased with that. But also, as I mentioned during the briefing, that this school is a historic school, and I think there's a historic commission. I, I think Mr. Porter, Ernie Porter, which maybe, I think he wants to make sure you call, you work with him. That's way down the road. But I just want to thank you for all that you've done and for a very comprehensive report. And I'm dealing with these changes in prices. We were going to build a deck, and then we decided we weren't going to build a deck because you're right. Lumber prices were just extraordinarily changed and increased. So thank you very much for everything you've done. And thank you for the finance department for what you've done tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Ralston?
Thank you very much. From the time that I showed up and voted, I guess, correctly and did all the things I was supposed to do, at least I thought I was supposed to do, I found that it was one of the most horrendous amount of money. But yet it gave the students, as well as the adults, the opportunity to say what it is that we either are not doing or we are doing. And that's something important and something that, at that particular time, when I first got here, that happened. I thank all of the staff. I really thank the staff for staying there. And especially during when, you know, the situation got quite a little difficult, you know, on what it is that we're doing with the hospitals. I think we need to take a look at lots of things. There's still some things left. Ms. Jessie always reminds you that there are things out there that need to happen. So we all need to get on that same boat or in that boat. And we'll just go on and do the best we can. And we hope that the community that joins in with us. So thank you very much. I think that, I think the thank.
Wonderful, Ms. Ralston. Thank you so much. Ms. Ms. Williams, next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also want to echo Ms. Ralston and Ms. Jessie's sentiments in thanking the division, especially facilities, for the job well done and reopening schools and presenting us this very thorough CIP plan. I'm excited for the elementary school in Woodbridge coming on pipeline and, and soon because as we know from the county side, there's a lot more housing development being planned in the Woodbridge District, and we're just very, very dense. And that sort of leads me to my next question, which I'm sorry I didn't bring up earlier, and you don't have to answer tonight because it's kind of a loaded question. But I am concerned when I look at the middle school enrollment, we already have quite a few trailers. And I see that as time goes on, that our building capacity is not going to, to sustain the number of students that are coming down the pike. And with Potomac Shores Middle School opening, originally, the idea was that that would take some of those students and recruit, and decrease the capacity, which I, I think was a good plan and it worked great. But now we have more development being proposed in the Woodbridge District. And with the number of trailers, like eight at Woodbridge, eight at Fred Lynn, and five at Woodbridge Middle, and two at Ripon, I'm just concerned that as we move along in years, that we'll end up sort of in the same position we're already in. And I'm just wondering how we can factor in those students and, and our goal of not having portable classrooms in the out year. So something that I don't need answered now, because I just surprised you with this question. But it, it would be great to hear because I know my district residents are very concerned. We're always concerned about elementary school population. But we know we have something to sort of alleviate that coming down the pike. But don't talk too much about our middle school population. And it seems like we've got that, that bubble with our middle school group.
Well, Ms. Williams, I can, it's not a loaded question, and I can actually respond to you because you have the same foresight that our planning team has. It's not presented in this year's CIP, but we are cognizant of the fact that at Potomac Shores Middle, that school addressed current enrollment needs, and it provides a buffer for the next two to three years. But we know that beyond that, as these new developments come about, the majority of the kids will go to elementary schools first. But there will be a handful that will be middle and high school with a lot of these new developments. We know that our planning team, our recommendation is we want to monitor one more year of enrollment. But I can envision that in next year's CIP, you may be looking at potentially if those enrollment numbers remain and those projects remain, that you will begin to see, we don't foresee a need for another middle school, but we do foresee that there may be a need for some classroom additions being added at some schools along the Route 1 corridor. But the, the data is too, it's too soon to look at that. But it is something that we, we are very cognizant of, and I think you will receive more information. Again, as we see, what is this, I don't like using the term, but it's, I think everybody understands it. What is our new normal post-pandemic, and what are these numbers really going to be? And I think in year two, we're going to have a foundation to where we're going to be coming back to you as a board to make some additional recommendations if those numbers continue to grow in, in, in that respective area for middle schools.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
My last question, before I ask that, I just want to say again, thank you because it's only been in our CIP for a couple of years. But I know Mr. Beavers and Mr. Shiroki instrumental in putting this in there. That is our program capacity. I can't talk enough about this because I don't think people understand. We have a building capacity, which is just simply how many people we fit in a building. But one of the things that makes us unique and special about Prince William County is our specialty programs and the programs we have within the schools. And every year that I see that in here, I'm excited because I think that gives us a better picture of what student, how many students, and what type of programs we can put in our buildings. And that's really important. And I, I think people just look at our buildings and go, oh, well, it's huge. Why do you need another school or why, why is it, why are you adding additions? So I just, I can't, I love that. And I'm, I'm wondering if we're going to get it for high school anytime soon. I know, I see Mr. Beaver shaking his head. I know this has been a long-running project, and I appreciate your work on this, Mr. Beavers. But I'll be even more excited when I see it for high school. My last question is, every year when we talk about the CIP, we have teachers, especially, especially teachers that come before us, and I see one in the audience now, which would remind me, about our music and our art space, our, our, music and arts in buildings and lab space. And have we done recently an audit on that to ensure all of our schools have dedicated space or we're making plans for dedicated spaces? Because some of our schools have computer labs or a dedicated art room or an orchestra room, and some don't. And we all know that those are vital to student learning. So if we could get an update on where we stand on that, especially since we're talking about adding additions and renovating schools, I think that would be great information for us to have as a board.
Yeah, the, the one thing I can add there is obviously, in years past, the Infrastructure Task Force, one of the biggest jobs they did was taking that initial baseline inventorying. And, you know, the direction that our facilities department received is, and the commitment that we've made is that as we continue to renovate schools, as we continue to build schools, to work, to determine if there, where the needs are when it comes to music education, be it band strings, science curriculum, you know, if there's a need for science labs, if there's a need for a STEM lab. But I will say this, you know, when we look at our instructional programming, the, the use of a computer lab with the one-to-one initiative, you know, that has opened up a lot of possibilities for many schools to be able to, to, to adapt with new space that they've captured. And we've had to look at that as well when we actually have capacity challenges when, when those computer labs, which are no longer needed in many respects. So yeah, we could provide you with an update on that. But it's, our stance has been, as we continue to do major renovations, we look at the amount of spacing that's in the building. We look at the current curriculum that the school is implementing and ensure that, you know, we can meet, best meet their needs.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Wilk?
Thank you. First of all, thank you all, just like everyone reiterated, for the hard work and the time and dedication that goes into it. Of course, you know, I can't reiterate enough, I'm very thankful for the work that was done at Forest Park. You know, I think the field, the stadium, everything just looks amazing, especially with that, you know, royal blue track, very innovative and cool. So we appreciate that there. Of course, I can't say enough about Potomac Shores Middle School. And then, of course, the initial steps of the HVAC and work at Graham Park. You know, I know, you know, over the last couple of years in the CIP, I have proposed to move Graham Park up, I think, every year. And I understand because that would require my colleagues to bump one of their schools back. So understand that vote. But I'm thankful that the fenestration, that looks, I'm really excited about that. And I'm also appreciative that you guys heard me and my constituents about redoing Potomac's track and Forest Park's tennis courts. That was a big one that was brought up in the community as well. And my question I asked earlier about the orchestra rooms, and I think you guys answered that to me, and that kind of goes in line with what Ms. Williams was asking. And so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Wall, or Ms. Ms. Jackson?
I thank you, thank you so much for, you know, meeting with us in advance and including some of our questions into the presentation. I'm very thankful for your team, Mr. Shiroki, and you, and Mr. Wallingford and his team, and for everything that you guys do for our school system and our students. I'm also really impressed with the Sustainability Council and relieved that we're taking concrete steps to address climate change. And I was able to see the new windows at the, at Unity Reed, and it's starting to address some of the community concerns expressed about new schools versus older schools. So it's nice to see, you know, that the community was heard. And then, and also another older school is Princeville District High School. And I'm, I know the community is excited about the, the new turf field and other improvements and the renovation process that I think the design process starts in the summer of 2023. So just thank you for all of that. Another thing that I'm grateful for is the HVAC updates and some of the principal schools, the new high school and the classrooms added at Gainesville Middle. Gainesville Middle was in, in dire need of the classrooms, they're over capacity, and they have like, I think, seven trailers. So thank you. All of these improvements, the long-term planning that you spoke of, and the constant review of the SIP are all vital, and I'm just really appreciative. Thank you also for taking the time to speak to the purpose for the delay at Rosemont Lewis Elementary School. And I just have one question, because you addressed many of them already. Will we be updated on the bids for the Bristol Run and Cedar Point renovations? And thanks again.
Yeah, the, the projects that are going to be forthcoming in the spring, on average, those projects, I don't have specifics, but it would be, timeframe could be between February and May. You know, we need to award those early so that we can get all the contracts in place and that the contractor can begin to mobilize and be in place to, to have some portion of this, this summer. So they're all different timelines, but you're going to see them between, sometime between February and May. February and May at the latest.
All right, thank you so much.
Ms. Wall.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shiroki and Mr. Wallingford for your presentation. I have to admit, I do really like talking about these topics. I find it very interesting. I'm not sure why, but I just think it's great, schools, attendance data, you know, debt revenue, all that. So the sustainability efforts in particular are, I think, going to be exciting because I think that's an emerging field of employment for our graduates as they enter the workforce. I think there are a lot of jobs in that area. I think there's a lot of innovation and creativity that is going to come to bear in the STEM fields in that field. And so I think it's just appropriate that we're doing, we're making strides in sustainability as an educational institution. I also commend the robust maintenance and repair plan in particular with the dates. I like that we have an update here with the dates when it's either, if it's in progress or completed or when it's going to be done. I appreciate that specificity. I agree with Ms. Williams about, you know, maybe some, a little bit more focus on dedicated space and classroom, in schools, music rooms, STEM labs, robotics spaces for specialty programs, et cetera. I think that's a good idea moving forward. But I have a couple of questions. One is regarding the budgetary impacts of volatility in the markets for construction materials. And my question is, if you could speak to what the Division plans to do to monitor those, that volatility in the financial markets and in like the purchasing or the building supply markets, like how closely are we going to monitor that? Like how frequently are we going to check in? Because I know there is a lot of volatility in those markets, financial and building materials, and I know that can really impact our plans.
So I can try to answer that as brief as possible. So the first resource that we have are the contractors that we currently have agreements with, that we are under construction. Those folks are out there doing estimates on jobs in other localities, other businesses, and they're able to share with us. But we, the way we monitor this is we look for comparable projects within the Northern Virginia region that command prices with the bid market that's similar to Prince William. And that's going to be, you know, there's a range there between Stafford and Fairfax County or Loudon to where we share the similar contractors, their subs. So we're able to monitor that. What we can't do is compare pricing, let's say for a data center project and compare that to school construction because those subs, in many cases, are a lot different other than maybe electrical or mechanical. But we monitor those by existing projects. We do have an estimator that kind of does work with us and with our architectural teams. That's part of the contract that we have where they have estimators and folks that forecast that. And then obviously, we look at major periodicals and journals. These charts, I did not create those, those came from Engineering Record, which is a very prominent magazine that produces quarterly reports that's used in multiple trades. But that's really how we're going to monitor it. The big question is going to be is if the prices go up, how are we going to adapt and adjust? And I believe that, you know, when there's minor fluctuations, I think we can modify that. But, you know, as we've always done, if we have prices that are higher than we have budgeted, I put this out there because ultimately, if that does occur, and I'm not saying that it is, but if it does, I want you to be prepared that Mr. Wallingford and I may be coming back and having to talk about, how do we react to that? Do we, if a project comes in over budget in the future, do we still continue to do that project 100% and then defer or delay a project that's at the end of the plan and you just shift it to where you continue with fidelity to renovate? Or do you end up doing, as we did back when the recession hit, you saw a lot of, a lot of school divisions, either they were having to reduce scope, they were having to split the project. You know, we just want to be able to prepare you that, we don't know what the future holds. We do see it's positive and that this, this is a blip in fluctuation, but we know with, I don't like to use the word, but inflation, you know that there are, there are things that reciprocate as a result of that. And the construction market is one big indicator. So we will keep you apprised as we begin, but it's going to be projects that we receive and other localities receive. So we contact Loudon, Fairfax, and our architectural firms that do work throughout Northern Virginia to be able to talk with them. You know, Arlington, you know, DC, those are, those projects come in a lot higher for multiple reasons than what our projects do. So we try not to align with those, but we do with, I'll say, the other two large jurisdictions, be it Fairfax and Loudon.
Okay, thank you. I'm really glad to hear that and I look forward to, you know, some of those updates in that area. Can I ask one more question? The question is a little bit more, just to help me understand, on the school maintenance and repair slide, I'm looking, I think it's slide 28, the electrical improvements category is, or is that where we would put things like sound systems, light systems in our auditoriums, smart boards and other like fixture-type technology? Is that also in this maintenance and repair schedule? And then, I'm assuming it would be maybe electrical improvements?
Yeah, so primarily it's not. We actually have a category that's for auditorium improvements, mainly sound. And we have that money there to respond to schools that are in need. We identified in last year's CIP, there were some schools that had surfaced and we were working with those schools to address. But these electrical improvements are primarily lighting, service upgrade, electrical service upgrades, real electrical stuff that's kind of behind the walls, other than the lighting.
Okay, great. So, so for things like, that I was talking about, that would be in a separate, there's a separate schedule of maintenance and upgrade and?
There is.
Repair.
But what I can say is for this upcoming year, we don't have any specific school projects, but the funding is there so that we can respond to schools that have needs. But we address the schools that, you know, there were some schools that their facilities are used quite often, their sound, their lighting just wasn't up to par and they needed some assistance from us, knowing that they maintain a lot of their own equipment through their facility use, and we provided that assistance. So we have it there to provide triage when needed for schools.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Ms. Zargarpur.
So, thank you, Dr. Latif. Actually, Ms. Wall, your last question is very much what I was interested in here. So some of our older buildings that get renovated, I'm thinking specifically of, say, Parkside Middle, which is under renovation right now. It's old, it's got like, there's got some, we've got some constraints because of how old it is, right? And I would expect in some of these much older buildings that have been in the county for a while, there's only so much you can actually do. So tying to the idea of there's an older infrastructure, older electrical and things like that, and you're upgrading them as you go. And I know you just said that this is sort of a separate bucket, but could we talk a little bit about it? So maybe my constituents or all of our constituents might understand a little bit better. When these renovations happen, the schools do have a little bit of budget to get new things, new, you know, smart boards or whatever it is that we're putting in, correct?
That is correct. They do have funding that allows them to do site-specific work.
Okay. So, so a lot of things, so I have Colgan in my district and I know we also have Gainesville is new and some of the older schools will look at the newer schools and say, well, they get this, 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 this. So can, what is possible for our older schools as our technology advances, as things improve on those, on that side? Oh my goodness, there were sounds. I hope other people heard that as well. So, so what could people expect in terms of those type of upgrades? Because that's a concern that's come up with some of my families in both Parkside and Osborne Park, because those are older buildings and they're not, well, Parkside now, yes, it's getting renovated, but even Osborne Park, some parents have been concerned about things that are there. They've got the governor's school program, we've got the, you know, the higher level, not higher level classes, but different kinds of classes that require different kinds of equipment and things that need to be more new. So could you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, so I'll go twofold and I don't want to sidestep part of my response with your question, but as you said with Parkside, that's a major renovation. So these, the monies that are under the school maintenance and repair, these are for schools that are not fortunate enough to be under that major renovation. So such as Parkside, there are monies that are there to assist that school in replacing that existing infrastructure that may be outdated, as you described. For schools that are not within that renovation cycle, you know, in the near future, you know, we work with those schools. If the system is not operational, then we have an obligation from a facility perspective to work with the school's principal in their budget ability to be able to try to find a solution to help them. But if something is not working, it is our goal, obviously in facilities, we fix it if it's not working, if it's broke. But if it's looking at doing a major upgrade, depends upon what it is. If it's structurally programmed, we work with the principals because again, there are some monies that they have available at times, we work with PTAs and we're able to generally address that. When it comes to a lot of these specific instructional programming needs, as from a facilities group, we don't tackle that head-on. That's usually where the principals work with their level associates, they work so that they're in sync with what other programs in the county are participating in. So if one school has a program and they're looking to do an upgrade, they have to look at that holistically because there may be another school in the other part of the county. One school may be older than the other and it may be that something is newer, but in many cases, you know, we work with them and if there's something that then surfaces, you know, we work with the respective levels in schools to then incorporate that into the CIP as it surfaces. I guess that's the best way to answer it. The CTE partnership that we have, that's a great example. You know, CTE does not have the money. They have money to buy equipment in many cases, but they don't have the money to do the infrastructure work. So that's where they partner with us and then we try to come up with a short-term, long-term plan to be able to improve those conditions, to promote all those opportunities for our students to get into the workforce.
Thank you. And I appreciate, I tend to forget, I was very focused on that question, but thank you so much for all the people at the schools who did clear the sidewalks and the parking lots and did all that work and I'm hoping maybe we'll have to do it again. No, I don't know. We'll see. But thank you for all of that. I know, excellent work. I took a, I took a drive around to my schools last week just to see how the efforts were. They were doing great and the neighborhood and sidewalks in other places that had nothing to do with Prince William County schools were a little iffy. So thank you guys for all the work that you guys do. Thank you.
I appreciate that. You know, I can give credit to our facility folks for clearing the lots, but I do have to thank all of the principals with their leadership and assistant principals working with their school-based custodians and doing a, just a Herculean effort in getting everything good for us so that 250-day staff could return, but then ultimately we were able to open schools. It is a tremendous effort and it's, it comes with a job, but it's very stressful for them. And for many of them, it's difficult for them to be able to get into work, just like for many of us. So my hat's off to them as well.
Okay, great. And I'll wrap up here real quick. I want to thank Dr. McDavid for bringing her talent here. I didn't expect her to bring her snow from Chicago. So when I got on the board in 2018, four years ago, you know, we were doing a little bit with sustainability. You guys had the, you know, it's, no one should underestimate what a small group of dedicated professionals you have out in the office there, Dave and Brian Gorm and Ms. Wymer. These folks work so hard. You had already had a sustainability type of program, we were already doing the lights and, you know, trying to save money here. I can't tell you how excited I am with the sustainability effort that's throughout the CIP. You know, as we talked about in the board-to-board meeting, the environmental, social, governance score that organizations are scored on now to see what kind of efforts they're making in those arenas affects our AAA bond rating. It affects, you know, the folks that invest in our bonds and the interest that's taken in that. And so I think this is really important. The sustainability efforts, while great for the climate and wonderful, actually, you know, it saves us money in the long run. And that's why the markets are moving towards this. So I can't thank you enough. You know, it is fantastic and I think the public should really take a look at the CIP. We have a net zero school on schedule to be broken ground on, what is that, 2025? 24. What's the date on?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five is the rebuild of the Oakland Elementary School, which will be a net zero solar geothermal. What I would ask you, I know this may not be the time to ask, but as we build some of these schools, we have, you know, some programs like the Planetarium over at Hilton, we have the Eagles Program at Belmont Elementary, you know, STEM centers. This, you know, and we talked about this sort of in the pre-planning sort of just ideas phase, that this school should also have a STEM center where students can come and visit, field trip from wherever to see how the energy is produced to run that facility. So a center dedicated to that, maybe even tourists could come and take a look and, I don't want to say like a science museum, but something along those lines where we can engage the public through parks and recreation and everything. So something to think about. And so anyways, thank you all so much. That is great. And I know those folks in that office, when given, given an idea, they just truly run with it and I can't thank them enough. I mean, their fingerprints, you know, and all you guys on sustainability is great. So that's been one of my big, big, big things. As we talked about you coming back to us maybe and telling us that, you know, if there's a contract awarded, we might have to make changes because of cost and this and that. You know, I've also made it sort of clear, for me, my, one of my highest priorities and I consider Ms. Lori Williams to be my school board rep in many ways because I spend most of my time in her district because I worked there and I lived there originally. My highest priority in when I got on this board was an elementary school in North Woodbridge. That is, that has been the highest priority for me and I've made that sort of one of my, one of my big things. I've seen Ms. Williams melt down meetings in the past about this not happening much sooner. I think the prior Board of County Supervisors made sure it didn't happen, they were not cooperative. This current Board of County Supervisors is cooperating, they're working well with us. But I will tell you, we cannot, I mean, whoever you pick to contract that, we cannot move that out any more years. That has to stay. That cannot be like what we just did with Rosemont-Louis. So we didn't expect a pandemic to happen and the fact that we had to sort of put things behind schedule, but on the Woodbridge Area Elementary scheduled for August 24, that has to go off on that day. And, you know, I plead with all of you that knowing what we know now about the situation of building, that should be, you know, that, the overcrowding in the eastern side is the worst and it has to be addressed. And so, you know, we didn't go into this a whole lot last year because of the pandemic. I'm not going to ask you, I will want to ask offline, just how many trailers were we at? What progress were we making on that? I know we haven't talked about that in a long time, but thank you for addressing that this evening. And then, you know, continue, I support the board, Dr. McDavid's efforts in the strategic plan, sort of addressing areas of what can we can do for specialty things. You know, we have great facilities. Brentsville District High School has great, the greenhouse over there, if you haven't all gone over there to take a look at it, these are great programs. And as we start, you know, thinking about moving forward in the next 10 years in the strategic plan, I welcome ideas and thoughts because we do update this every year and I know with Dr. McDavid bringing her new strategic plan to the board, there are going to be a lot more ideas. So, thank you all, but I just, you know, I plead with you on the Woodbridge Area Elementary School. That is my, you know, my highest priority in this, in the CIP, for whatever that's worth. Whether Chair's statement makes any difference or not, I don't know. But, but I love you guys, this is great work. Thank you all, Dr. McDavid. I think with that, we can close the work session.